You hear me?
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Is it coming? Is she hearing us through the computer?
Hold on.
Yes.
Yes.
I think we're hearing her through the computer.
New technology tonight, so bear with us, folks.
Bear with us, folks.
Why turn your volume?
I will walk out if this goes like the last one. I'm not going to go through that again.
Second.
We'll go back to the days of meeting in the back of the library.
Robert, can you still hear us?
For everybody that's watching, give us a few moments. We're doing some new technology, ironing out a few kinks. Bear with us.
It's just on this. It's this that has the speakers coming out of it.
Edison, are you here?
Can everyone on the Zooms hear us?
Can you people hear us on Zoom?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
Thanks, Robert.
And we can hear you. Amazing.
Very happy right now.
Are we good?
I think we're good.
I think we're good.
Okay.
The volume is still coming out, but it's just down low.
You got that? Okay, so.
It won't let me.
All right. Ready? Get this over here. Welcome to the August 12th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. We have a kind of a full agenda tonight, and I want to start off by talking about new technology is being experienced tonight. This is the first meeting in this building that is being livestreamed. We talked about this for the last couple of years. Tonight's the debut. You don't have to adjust your glasses. We understand that everybody is a little blurred on screen. We're working on that for the next meeting, right, Jim?
Yes.
Yep. So just bear with us. I think you can at least tell us apart, so that's a good thing. Very exciting to be livestreamed tonight. I just want to explain to everybody what that means. It means that people that don't live in Millis can watch, and we're hopeful to and people that don't have cable can watch, which anybody under 50 probably doesn't have anymore. And we're hoping to bring this to other boards as well, and we're very excited about it. So that's the big announcement. Did we, was there anything else on the thing, Karen, that you wanted me to say about this?
About this?
Yeah.
I would say no.
No, okay.
Go on to committee vacancies, if you want.
So we'll go on to the committee vacancies. Do you want to talk about that, Karen, or do you want me to?
Sure. So currently, we have three vacancies that we are, that I'm aware of, for different boards and committees here in town. And I know some people have already put in requests to be considered for boards, but we just wanted to put it out there again. One is our Permanent Building Committee. We have a vacancy there. The Permanent Building Committee consists of five permanent members as well as some ex officio members. It is responsible for estimating, designing, constructing town building projects, including renovations. So that's a great board to join if you're interested. We also have the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. We are looking for someone to join that committee as well. They will start their work shortly as we head into the Fall Town Meeting. The committee reviews the short and long-term needs of the town and develops a comprehensive capital plan for presentation to and adoption by the Select Board. So it's just a little brief synopsis. We can give you more information. If you are interested, you can reach out. And then our Enterprise Advisory Committee, who will be speaking to us tonight.
Yep.
Has a vacancy. Enterprise Committee advises the Select Board in its role as the Water and Sewer Commissioners and the governing authority of the stormwater enterprise on policies relating to water, sewer, and stormwater enterprises. And again, I'll post this on the homepage of the website for anyone who's interested in applying. We have volunteer forms online, or you can reach out to either Victoria or I in the office, and we can assist you. So we encourage you to apply.
Okay, great. So that's it for the committee vacancies?
It is.
What's that next? What's MC? Do you want to talk about that?
MCPPO.
Mass Certified Purchasing something.
So that's the Mass Certified Public Purchasing Official, which I just earned. I had to take quite a few classes, and I just earned the designation, and it's sort of a big deal. So Mike said to announce it, so I'm announcing it and giving myself a pat on the back, I guess, for this. It helps for public purchasing and assists in various projects. Mike, if you want to speak to it, so I'm not speaking about myself.
Cory, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can, perfectly. Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, thanks to the board for your indulgence in having me join remotely this evening, given the little under weather. But I did ask Karen to put this on there, as she just mentioned. She finished a very lengthy class schedule through the state procurement certification process, passed all the required tests. Every town of the Commonwealth really needs to have an MCPPO, I believe, at least up until recently. I was the only one in town that had the full designation, so it's important to have other folks have that designation. We were able to do that through a grant that Karen applied for, and so that whole process getting that designation was free. That saved the town about $2,000 in class costs. So I just wanted to point that out and congratulate her for getting that designation.
Well, congratulations, Karen. That's terrific.
Thank you. It's a good thing.
I hope we don't have to pay you anymore.
Can I say, is there money involved?
Beat you to it, Jim. Beat you to it. Okay.
Oh, and then the last announcement is just, this is the Town of Millis Water Department will be flushing hydrants at the Regency at Glen Ellen beginning tonight. Oh, no, today. Started today at 10:00 a.m., and that will go on through August 13th at 3:00 p.m. If you experience discolored water, please run a cold tap or an outside spigot until the water clears. And if you have questions, you can contact the Water Department. There it is.
There it is. You good?
All right.
That is it.
Okay, she covered it. Okay, move on to the first agenda item. We have appointment of tri-county school rep. And we have with us Jane Harden, who has been the tri-county school rep for I don't know how many years. How many years?
2019.
2019, four years, five years. And we have Mr. Cantoregui, moderator, who is the appropriate appointing authority. So we.
And Robin Briggs, who's the chair of the school committee.
Oh, Robin Briggs, Chair of School Committee is on Zoom?
Yes. This is a joint appointment of all three. Chair of the Select Board, sorry, Ellen, Chair of the School Committee and Moderator.
Not for nothing, but this seems to be the biggest appointment in the town, your piece, which is hilarious. You want to sit up there?
Come on up, Sophie, you want to speak to the microphone.
Come on up.
I also, I had sent you this stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got it.
We're good.
Well, there's another copy.
Great.
You know, we're teachers, that's what we do.
More paper, thank you.
Touching paper.
You're not touching paper. So we invited you here because we had a couple of questions that we wanted to ask you. And so Craig, do you want to start?
Yeah, I'm just curious, now that the school construction project's going on, what's the plan to keep us informed about the progress, costs, and all of that? Because I felt, and I think all of Erin, Pete, and I were the three that were on it when that project came forward in the final iteration, and I don't believe there was incredibly strong communication about the project until right before it hit the table. But now that it's done, I don't want to rehash that.
No, no.
But I'm sure there's stuff that's happening now, and I don't know if there's a plan to keep the town informed. I'd like to find out what your thoughts are on that.
Absolutely. We did not meet this month. This is the only month we don't meet. We'll be meeting again in September. So I can tell you right now, they're still working with some of the powers that be in Franklin in terms of they were looking at a traffic pattern thing. So you will get any information that I have by pass line, and I will beg to disagree because before this came into any sort of fruition, I alerted the town. I know Peter, you would vouch for me, and I let Peter, who was the head of the Finance Committee.
Oh, sorry, Jane. Can you just pull the mic, too?
Oh, can you speak into the mic? Thanks, Jim.
All right, I get it.
Bring it.
So I did. I did make sure that once I found out that this was even going to happen, I let him know. So, you know, not knowing exactly how the communication goes through the town, I went through, thank you. I went through Peter, and I went through Peter at the, because he had asked me to take on this role initially through the Board of Selectment.
I think that we should probably schedule some type of update on a regular basis with Jane come before us.
Yeah, I guess what we don't know, you say you went to Peter, but what's the, is there a description of, is there something written down that explains what your role is exactly?
Well, that's why I sent this to you.
I had the job description in the package.
Yeah. You did.
Yeah, it's in the job description in the package.
That's why I wanted to get you this ahead of time, not before tonight.
Okay, so when you, were there, did you have scheduled meetings with the board, or you just privately went to Peter and then he brought it to the board? How did that work?
The way it worked, from my understanding, so my role is really to the students of Millis who attend tri-county, who want to know. That is my primary role and responsibility. When it came, and that's listed, that's listed in here.
Okay.
Well, I guess, do you feel that there's a responsibility to communicate our concerns about tuition, about?
Absolutely. But I'm saying, my.
Is that being done?
I absolutely agree with you. Again, I want to go back to historically, to the head of the Finance Committee, probably two years ago, when I saw this coming down the pike, I said, are you aware of this coming? And gave him the information about this.
Who's him?
Peter, is it Barube?
Yeah.
Yeah. I gave it to him.
Okay, let's go back one second. Your primary role, so if this school wasn't being built.
Mm-hmm.
Your primary role is to the students of Millis that attend.
Right. I am the Millis rep for tri-county regional vocational high school. My role is really to, you know, as it's pointed out in here, what does, what other responsibility? And it talks about, really, my job is to protect the students of Millis that are interested in attending tri-county, and my responsibility, unlike if I was just the Millis School Committee. My role is a little bit differently because we're regional. So it's a little bit different. We got 11 communities as opposed to just Millis Public Schools. And I did keep, before we had any even talk about the new school being built, I made sure that the head of the Finance Committee was aware that this was coming down the pike. Now, okay, where I can say I maybe lacked the information, not knowing, okay, at that point, telling him what was going on with the finances, I maybe should have told a bunch of other people. My assumption, erroneously perhaps, was that telling the person that was in charge of the Finance Committee, he would disseminate this information because he was going to be needing to know this.
I will point out, the Finance Committee is not one of the three appointing boards here at all. I'm glad you informed them, but I think it's critical you inform the school committee, the Select Board Chair, and the moderator, who are the appointing authorities on this. I'm glad you informed the Finance Committee, but they're not one of them.
Select Board was told to.
I've gone through all my emails, and I honestly don't see much, but I'll take, we're not going to rehash that process.
Right, just moving forward.
I want to figure out how we can move it forward better, because we'll disagree on the quality of the informing. So I will work with, I think we should work out a plan to get quarterly updates and have our concerns, not just the students' concerns, but the taxpayers' concerns, those of us that are going to be hit with at least another $300,000 to pay for it this year if our enrollment stays stable, 600 if our enrollment goes up. Those are real concerns that I think are your, in my mind, would be the representative's role to address with the school committee, to let them know the impact it's having on our town. If your job is to advocate for students' needs, that's, I, if you see that as your need, we're going to disagree on this, you know, because I really believe you have to advocate.
I'm going by the state regulations for my responsibilities, too.
Yeah, go ahead, Brutus.
Madam Chair, I think it's only fair to say that, this is great, it's all come up now, and I believe that Ms. Harden, if we give her directions, you know, me as the appointing boy of the FNCOM, and you folks, she will come up. This is not the first time she's been appointed. She's never given direction before, and, you know, living in town is like, hey, 10, 12 kids went over there, we paid the bill. Well, now we're facing large numbers of money.
Agreed.
So I think it needs to come, as you just said, can't go back in the past. She didn't have a lot of direction, okay? But I'm sure the direction we give her, okay, she will follow that, and I think that's a fair thing. I also say, I did talk to, I've known you for, I've known her for a while, but like anything else, I'm going to put my name on it, I did call the superintendent or whatever they call it.
Superintendent Karen McGuire.
And I work with Owen Franklin, and she spoke very highly.
Yeah, no, I'm.
You don't try and say.
I do, Brutus, and we're not, we're not here to relitigate the past.
That's what I don't want to do.
We're just here to set expectations for the future. That's all. That's all.
Yep.
So, you know, we take as much blame, I suppose, if there's any to be bad word. We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
But you know what we're expecting.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a surprise for a very large bill, and those schools don't happen overnight. And maybe that, and I got on the committee a year before, I think that it really started, the prices started coming in, so anyway, I'm not going to relitigate it. I think we have to come up with a plan going forward, and that was my whole point. I believe the communication in the past was problematic, and I think we can fix it going forward, I think is the best way to put it.
That's it.
And I want you to be an advocate for the town, too, not just the students. I think that's really important, that you advocate for keeping the costs as reasonable as possible because that affects everybody else in town. And I went there and talked to them and got nowhere. You're in the committee room with them, you're a voting member of the committee, I assume.
Yes.
So you do have much more sway than me sitting in the audience telling them that, that I'm not happy. Yeah.
Okay, understood?
Yes.
Good. So.
I would like to also extend this invitation personally to you, because you know someone on that committee who's related to you.
Oh, Jeffrey.
And Brian.
Yeah.
And he really would like you to come for a tour.
Okay.
So he asked me to extend that specifically to you, and I would like to reinforce that.
Okay, sounds good.
We ready for him?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't get to vote, you get to vote. So if you're ready to vote, I'm ready to vote.
You ready, Erin?
Yeah, too.
No, this is only the chair.
Just the chair.
It's all you.
Oh, this is me?
Yep.
Yes, this is you enjoying, yes.
Did you make a thing for me? Or did I just say?
I did, so you can read the first one.
Well, you didn't give it to me, you gave it to Karen.
Does Robin have any questions?
Yes, unless we're all.
Oh, Robin, do you have any questions?
I was just going to say that I sort of agree with what you guys were saying, that I thought that, I was surprised that this was a position. I just learned about this, and I, this is my third term that I'm serving, and I had no idea that we had a school committee person for the tri-county, so I'm learning a lot along the way here in the last six or 10 years. And I just sort of assumed that she represented Millis on the school committee, so that would be great going forward if she could represent everyone from our town, even if we only have a few kids there, like you were saying, the taxpayers put the bill. So just like us on the school committee here, we represent the town as well as the students, so that would be wonderful going forward.
Okay, thanks.
I'll do my best, but I will, I must reiterate that the job as detailed by Mass General Law is to the students, not necessarily to the town. So I just, you know, I'm just going to say to you, that's why I passed this out, or had this sent to you before, so you could look through it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you don't have a problem adding the town?
Of course, I've been a resident of Millis since 1980, of course.
I know. Okay, great. So let's get to, what number are we on? I move to appoint?
That's it.
Yes.
Right there?
Number one. And then one, either Robin or Brutus can second, and then you.
Do they both second?
I, I, I.
I can second it.
Okay. I move to appoint Jane Harden, the Town of Millis's tri-county school representative from June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Do I vote, do I do it?
Yeah, you guys do, yes.
You have to roll.
Separate, Robin?
Aye.
Brutus?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, unanimous. Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did I mess that up for you? Okay. Hold on.
Tighten it up.
I'm tightening it up. I got, I got, there's a lot of stuff here. Okay. Next, we are having a, next on the agenda is appointment of a temporary town clerk. So you want me to go right into it?
Um, yeah. Madam Chair.
Or Mike in?
Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I jumped in. So as the board's aware, I did receive a letter last week from the town clerk dated August 6th from Lisa Harden, letting us know that due unforeseen circumstances, she won't be able to complete her three-year term, which expires in May of 2026, so she retired effective August 6th. So I just want to take a minute to stand for her 21-plus years of service to the town, and so we'll talk about that more going forward, but just to kind of address the immediate needs of the town, I just wanted to request that the board tonight, per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 14, appoint Kathy Smith as a temporary town clerk until next May's annual town election.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I'd like to, before we do that, I'd like to add a few words about Lisa. So Lisa Harden has served as the town clerk for the last 21 years. She is a town resident, she has done the elections, you name it, she's been responsible. In addition, she currently serves on the Board of Assessors and the Board of Registars. She was previously on the Board of Assessors from 1992 to 2003. She was on the planning board from 1985 to 90, was chair from 1988 to 90. She served this town pretty much for the last 40 or 30-something years. A long line of serving, the Hardens. Her mother was on the Select Board, her brother was on the Select Board, her sister-in-law just left here serving. So I just want to acknowledge that Lisa's done a lot for this town and will continue to do so moving forward. On that note, I have a motion.
I move to appoint Kathy Smith as temporary town clerk until the May 2025 annual town election.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. You can.
I just wanted to also just recognize Kathy as well. She does a lot of great work in that office, and I think this is a, hopefully seen as a well-deserved.
Yes.
Motion of sorts.
Yes.
So thank you for all of your work.
Yes. We have no doubt that this transition will be seamless, Kathy. So thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Kathy, for stepping up. What?
Craig can't see around the roadblock. There we go. Look in, is she here?
She's here.
Yeah, I can see her now. I saw her.
They're both here.
I had to look around the roadblock.
Okay, moving on.
Ready?
Hop on up here, Jen. We have the approval of a general obligation bond. Jen Skennell?
Jen Skennell, treasurer-collector. This is just a renewal note for $875,000. It's a short-term bond anticipation note, otherwise known as a band. It is for the purchase of acquiring the parcel of land located at Village Street, parcel 41003H, which was authorized at the annual town meeting, May 1st, 2021, formerly known as the Braun property. So the winning bidder was Piper Sandler with a weighted average net interest cost of 4.112, premium of $3,395. Short-term, like I said, maturing 81525, with an annual interest payment of $39,375. And I left some documents that the board needs to sign and included a suggested motion as well.
Okey-dokey.
Questions? It's pretty basic.
Just, it's a short term.
It's a short term, yeah, yeah.
When does it go out for the permanent bonding?
So I don't think we're going to bond this because we don't know the long-term use. So we can borrow a short term up to 10 years.
Yeah.
This is the third year, we have seven years to pay it off.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Anything, Karen?
No.
Okay. Motion?
Okay, I moved that the board approved and signed a renewal note relating to the town's $875,000 general obligation bond anticipation note, dated August 15th, 2024.
Second, sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Do the documents now or no? They have not signed them yet, so they, yes, you have a stack like this to sign.
We'll sign them after the meeting.
Yeah, we'll do it later.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Got my sign-in pen.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Mr. McKay, the FY25 water, sewer, stormwater rates.
Thank you.
So, hold on, Erin, if you can open the hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I move to open the FY25 water, sewer, stormwater rate hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'll be quick here. Ty and Bond has done our rate study again. This has been the fourth or fifth year that they've done that. Ben and Joshua, they'll introduce themselves as they go along. I'm going to just get right to the point of Jen Skennell and myself and the finance director have reviewed this and approved this. Unfortunately, the board is looking at this probably for the first time because it was running late into, we had much discussion over Thursday and Friday, and I had to wait till Jen and Carol got back for some conversation on this before we finalized it. The Enterprise Committee are looking at it, just as you're looking at it tonight also. The, we will eliminate the Enterprise for the stormwater. We're not asking for any rate increase for that this year again. This would be the, I think, the sixth, the seventh year that we've not asked for an increase for the stormwater. We're getting into a tricky area with that, with the permitting and construction aspects. We will be probably looking for one next year, but as of right now. So I'll let Ben take it over, and he's going to do the presentation, and I'll speak after it.
Thank you very much. I assume you can hear me.
Thank you very much. I assume you can hear me. Uh, my name again is Ben Leveque. I'm with Ty and Bond. I'm joined with, by Joshua Bouchard, who helped put together the rate evaluation. I have a very brief presentation. I'm gonna try to share my screen in a second. Hopefully it'll work, but it'll just be what's in your packets there. Um, as Jim had said, Ty and Bond has been working with the town, I believe, since 2020, looking at water and sewer evaluations. As with the previous ones, we review your revenue expenses, and then we also look at retained earnings for both the water and the sewer antivirus fund to check them for their health and just make sure that there's enough funding available. So, we look also at water use and consumption, and also work with your town staff to look at any potential debt and trends in water use and capital planning projects that could be coming out, so that we can try and set adequate rates to be able to fund it. So, with that, the goal is to generate a balance of creating the revenue to support the fund, but also keeping things affordable, but also maintaining and providing the level of service that your customers want. So, if you bear with me for one second, I will share this. I'm gonna do a presentation of it. Hold on.
It worked?
I'm holding my bro.
For what?
To make sure it worked.
Yeah, the only thing I'm trying to do is I have to move the bar on my screen.
Oh, my God, don't move the bar. The whole thing will go blank.
Oh, move the bar, move to the edge. Perfect.
All right.
Oh!
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. All right.
This is exciting.
These little wins.
And you can't see the notes telling me to do it with my volume, so great.
Okay.
So, um, I will start with the water rates, and as you can see from the top right there, uh, the evaluation is recommending a 10% rate increase for fiscal year '25. Um, a lot of numbers here. I'm not gonna go too into depth, but basically, we looked at revenue for fiscal year '23, '24, and come, come up with an estimated fiscal year '25 based on a 25% rate, I'm sorry, 10% rate increase. Expenses are pulled from your budgets for fiscal year '23, '24, and also for '25, which I believe is already approved. Um, the capital outlay looks at debt service within the enterprise fund, but also looks at the addition, existing capital outlay is the use of cash, I think, to pay for either warrant items or projects directly out of the retained earnings. And the retained earnings, which is your reserve account, um, it shows that with a starting balance, we always wanna try and maintain a little bit of funding there in case the rainy day comes. And based on the 10% increase, that would result in about $176,000 remaining. Again, the attempt at these is to be conservative, but, um, that, that's what 10% will do for you relative to the water enterprise. Similarly, with the sewer enterprise for fiscal year '25, similar information, similar connected from the town, but, uh, we're looking at a 5% increase. This also takes into account looking at expenses as well as the potential capital outlay. There's no new debt service associated with the sewer enterprise this year. And then you also have a, a good, robust retained earnings of $573,000 that'll allow you to pay for things as they come up and pay cash as opposed to having to borrow. So, this last slide, I, I hope it projects okay. There's a lot of information. Most of this just shows the various components of your rate structure, whether they're the quarterly fees for meters or the usage fees, and what that increase will be at 10% increase for water and 5% for sewer. But down at the bottom, we did include a residential impact, and this is just using a, a, a typical family, three people, using 60 gallons per person per day. Um, that annual increase for your water bill based off of that would be about $63, and for sewer would be an increase of about $36.68. Um, and we also have the quarterly increase there, but that's just, uh, that's divided by four for the annual. So, um, that's really all that I had in terms of the part of the presentation. I don't have any more slides, but is there anything we wanna ask? Questions, or happy to try and do that?
So, I guess, um, most importantly, we're asking for a, a rate increase of 10% and 5% across the board. Um, in the last several years, we have not increased the, our connection fees, on and off fees, the meter fees, and stuff like that. So we are asking for a full fledge 10% across water and sewer, uh, funds for this. And I, I, this is pretty much almost the exact same rates that we had last year, uh, increase. And, um, the bonding of the, um, PFAS, the remaining PFAS wells one and two, you know, that's in, that's included in this. Um, you know, and, you know, I know Craig always says that, you know, and we are, we, we're actively still out there looking for any funds that we can help to offset the costs of these PFAS plants. I think you're gonna hear some good news in the, in the upcoming months, you know, and the residents will be hearing, you know, some, you know, good news that the town administrator, myself, Karen, have been working on for several years on that, on that front. Um, we're getting close, but nothing to report exactly right yet.
I have a few questions.
Well, go ahead.
All right, just so we can understand it a little better. Uh, in the capital fees. The capital fees, um, that is the debt service on the PFAS, on the, uh, pipe repair, all of that. How is that, that's correct, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, that, I phrased it as a statement, but that was a question.
Yes.
This one is a straight question. How is that allocated? Is that on a usage basis, or is that on a household basis?
That's on a, a household, right, household basis.
Household. So each household pays the same amount regardless of usage?
Correct.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure how that was allocated out.
So we are, in the upcoming, this fiscal year, we are gonna look at how, if that is eliminated, how that will affect. Because, you know, the one person that uses much water.
Right.
It, it affects, would affect them a lot more if somebody used a lot more water, if we just distribute those funds. They have to be, they have to come in somewhere. So if there are rate structure.
Right.
Or if it's a flat fee.
I mean, right off the top of my head, without any more thought than the, from you said, household till now, it seems like a, a usage basis is more equitable, but I'd like to see what that looks like.
And that's what we're gonna ask them to do.
Yeah. And then, um, the other question I had, and I may have just forgotten it.
I'll interrupt you for one second.
Go ahead.
You said a second ago, this average, three people using 60 gallons. I have no idea. Is that really average? Is that low? Is that high?
It's a typical value, like, we, we, we're just trying to come up with a.
I know, but is it real, or is it?
Yeah, it's AW, I think it's AWA. American Water Works standard, just as a.
And for, for actuality, I mean, the, the average home.
Per person.
Per person is 56 gallons. Joshua does that for us also. In our annual statistical report, we have to submit what per person is used. And right now, we have a, a 56 gallon per day.
Okay.
Per person with an unaccountable water of 4.3%.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you remember it?
No, but I'm sure it's not relevant. The household one was the big one that was important. Um, and the other question, um, retained earnings in, uh, the sewer are quite high. Is, is that, uh, by design? Is it because things, when they fail, are more expensive with the sewer, or do we, I, I guess it's in, the context is, do we need to raise the rates with that high of retained earnings?
Yes. Um, the goal is to keep the, that fund flush with cash. Um, the target is to have, and it's a little higher than that right now, but the target is to have 20% in retained earnings, which is like a DOR recommendation. It's not a requirement. And, yeah, as you said, there, there can be things that come up, but this affords you the ability to then pay for things with cash as opposed to having to borrow.
Right. I was just comparing that, and, and I would have agreed with all that, except the water retained earning seems quite low then, based on that logic.
It, it does, and we were trying to keep the water rate increases within a certain realm. And over time, as, as Jim had said, if we look at things going forward, the goal will be to gradually build that up.
Okay. So it's not that the sewer is high, it's that the water is low on the retained earnings side?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We got any questions from the audience? Nope. Do we have a motion?
I move to close the fiscal year '25 water sewer stormwater rate hearing.
Second, I remembered the question. How many homes are on water and how many homes are on sewer?
Uh, Mr. Duffy, I just sent you that.
Or just send it to me tomorrow, if you don't mind.
We will. We have that.
You have it?
Yeah.
I just saw it, didn't I?
There's 3,000.
I feel like roughly 3,000 on water and.
And, and 17, almost 2,000 on sewer. We, I just sent it to Mr. Duffy.
Roughly.
An hour ago. I'll send it to you.
I thought it was someplace, but I didn't, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Second.
You have that one.
Do I have that one?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to, do, anything else before I close?
No, that was it. That was the question.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, do we have a motion?
I move to approve a 10% increase across the board for fiscal year '25 water rates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a 5% increase across the board for fiscal year '25 sewer rates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, unanimous.
I move to keep stormwater rates the same as the fiscal year '24 rates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We done with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, approval of gasoline slash diesel pricing. We have Bob Weiss on Zoom. Hi, Bob.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Bob, for the record, Bob Weiss, the energy manager of the town. Uh, every year, we purchase a year's worth of gasoline and diesel fuel for the town fleet. Uh, for many years, we've been using the Norfolk County Consortium, uh, because they deliver a very good, uh, price for us. And right now, we have an opportunity to purchase, uh, gasoline, uh, at a cost of $2.74 a gallon, and diesel at $2.77 a gallon, uh, for a one-year contract starting on September 1st. So, tonight, I'm asking the board to authorize the town administrator to sign a one-year contract with Global Montello, which is a company that we will use. We go through the Norfolk County Consortium.
Okay.
And, and Bob, I just wanted to add, so I did provide the email that you sent with the pricing that we just received from Norfolk County, so you should have a paper in front of you with that information. Um, is that, but that's not set in stone, correct? I mean, this can vary just a bit.
No, gas prices are not ever set in stone until you sign the contract, but.
Right.
There's been some volatility, but that's, that, that, we should be able to get very close to that, uh, this week. And we'll probably sign the contract up, uh, Wednesday or Thursday.
So the motion?
Usually we have an op, usually, uh, we're given, uh, a window of, you know, a, a window of five, five cents a gallon, something like that.
So, Bob, the, uh, the motion that we prepared for the select board here, um, sorry, I'm losing my spot on here. Where am I at? Is, uh, I move to authorize the town administrator or his designee to approve a one-year contract to person purchase gasoline with pricing in effect from September 24th through August 25th through the Norfolk County Consortium. Do you wanna say?
Does he want the numbers in there?
Do you want it to say at a not-to-exceed price, or not? I was not sure.
You know, well, we could put this more into the discretion of town administrator to, um, how did I put it last week? If he feels it's in the best interest of the town. We could, we could say, uh, it's a 270, what did I say? 275? We could say 285?
At a not-to-exceed?
Well, it's up to you.
I would trust it at the discretion of the town administrator. Um, I don't think we have to put a price in there because utilities are highly volatile, and if they're on the upswing, I don't wanna.
Come back here?
Come back here if we miss it because we're a penny off on our estimate, you know? Better to trust the discretion of the two professionals.
So, Karen, I think we're okay with the motion as is?
Yes, so I would say stay with the motion as is.
Okay. You ready?
Okay. I move to authorize the town administrator or his designee to approve a one-year contract to purchase gasoline with pricing in effect from September 2024 through August 2025 through the Norfolk County Consortium.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, next on the agenda to, uh, wanna talk to Jim, our IT, uh, extraordinaire?
That's right.
We're talking about approving IT workstations conversion. Bring it on. This is exciting stuff. Exciting stuff.
You have to say it's exciting.
If you have to say it's exciting, it's not exciting?
I'm excited. Go on, Jim.
Jim Donovan, IT director for the town. Um, over the past five years, we have been using Azure virtual desktops or Azure virtual environments. During this period, we have observed that the costs associated with Azure virtual desktops.
Okay, bubba, stop down one second. What's that word you're saying? Azure?
Azure.
Azure.
Microsoft Azure.
Got it.
It's a product.
Okay, just, just for everybody else, not me.
Uh, we have observed the costs associated with this, um, including service fees, computer costs, and antivirus software are significantly higher compared to traditional desktops. Um, to be honest, not necessarily antivirus, but while Azure virtual desktops offer scalability and flexible remote access, they also cut, require more complex administration, administration, and a greater reliance on continuous cloud service management. On the other hand, traditional desktops are generally easier.
Jim, 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 slow down a little bit. I know we're behind by six minutes. Slow down.
It's also quite hot in here, you know?
I know it is. I guess we don't, people are fanning themselves. It's by design that it's hot in here, so, go ahead.
Uh, traditional desktops are generally easier for IT to manage and operate within a more consistent and predictable environment. Both solutions continue to utilize SharePoint for file storage, maintaining continuity in our data management practices. Uh, given our experiences with Azure and the stability of traditional desktops, I recommend that select board approve a transition from virtual to traditional desktops. By making this change, we estimate annual savings of approximately 15,000 to 20,000. Although these savings may not reduce the overall budget, they will help prevent the need for increase in this line item, offering a more stable cost and effective solution for the town of Melles.
Okay. Any questions, Craig?
Yeah, would Azure, would Azure virtual desktops be used for more, like, remote work locations, as you said, people who work from home and not traditional office?
No, they would, Azure, Azure would basically go away from that perspective.
No, no, I mean, is that the design for it? I, I understand that.
Yeah.
So it's, so if we were a remote workforce, it would make sense to stay on Azure, but since we're in the building mostly, it makes sense to move to.
Correct. If we were more remote, and we also had a bigger IT department, um, more, I guess, I don't, I don't know how to say it, but more, more IT administration surrounding it, it would make some sense. Uh, a lot of it's used for, uh, bring-your-own-device, companies that actually don't give their employees computers. They just say, you know, you're on for the next six months, log into this, um, and they don't have devices that they provide.
Yeah. So it, it does make sense for application.
Can you just, can you explain the cost savings, why we would be saving money?
So basically, from a, from a couple different instances, the, the straight-up cost savings.
Yes, I know, it's cheaper, Craig. Go ahead.
Uh, the cost savings is specifically from the Azure, um, virtual environment where these computers are, this computer is stored for everyone to log into. It costs money to just have it on, um, depending on how many you have on. For people to log in, costs a little bit more money. How much use is a little bit more money. Um, compare, and we still need some physical device within the building to then connect to that. Uh, the negatives from it are also Zoom and WebEx meetings and things like that are much more difficult in that environment because you're actually looking at a remote screen while trying to actually have a meeting, and it doesn't work very well. So, what ended up happening is a lot of people had separate laptops, and not only did they have this virtual client, so to speak, we call them thin clients, to be able to connect to that, they also had a laptop that they only used for meetings and such, things like that, which sometimes could even be, the computer only gets used once a month. Yet, we're also supporting that from an antivirus, from an IT perspective, from an update perspective, from a user going to use a computer that's, only gets used once every other, every month. As soon as you turn it on, it's doing a million updates, and they, they're late for their meeting because of that. Instead of a computer they were using all day long at their desk and just took home to, to get on that Zoom or get on the Zoom right from their desk.
So how long would it take to transition?
I would estimate no more than two months. I would think about a month it would be transitioned over to it. Um, the cost associated with buying desktops, um, would be within, within the same, um, budget year. So that way, the cost saving would increase for the next, say, two months as I'm purchasing things, but then it would go down after that.
Okay. Erin, got anything?
I don't.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I just have something very quickly. So, I just wanted to back up a little bit. Um, for those who aren't aware, this is the first time we've ever had a full-time IT director. Um, prior to that, we had a half-time IT director, and prior to that, we had no IT director, and this is in very recent years. So I know, like, Pete Tremaine, sitting in the audience, who is a select board member, he did a lot of work trying to help us, um, come into the century, pretty much, with our computers, and, and he actually put in the Azure system, and at the time, that made a lot of sense, and, and we were under, um, thankfully, we had Pete to help us at least get over this hump and try to figure a lot of this out. And things have changed a little bit, and we would go now with our, the direction of, um, Jim being the IT director, but I did wanna say that we have come far in these years, so we're still a work in progress, and, and a shout-out to Pete, too. Um, but thanks to Jim for, for working on this, but this has been a work in progress, um, for sure.
Yes.
So, just of note.
I'm thrilled of how far we've come, honestly. It's, it's terrific. Um, okay, are we ready for motion?
Um, I move to approve the conversion from Azure virtual desktops to physical desktops for municipal offices at the Veterans Memorial Building as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Okay, next on the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, okay, approval, is Jim still here?
No.
No, no approval, presentation.
Presentation.
Oh, presentation by the enterprise.
Yeah.
Enterprise, that, that's not the name of it, right?
Enterprise Committee? Just Enterprise Advisory.
Advisory.
Right.
You put in the word.
I'm sorry.
It's fine.
It's been the Enterprise Advisory Committee. It's been the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee. It's been the Enterprise Funds Committee.
The charter says Enterprise Advisory.
So, let's just.
We're gonna go with your title.
Before, hold one second. So, in my notes, you, your first meeting or your first agenda was posted on April 13, '23. Does that sound right? Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
This is the first time we've met since then, correct? So it's a year and a few.
Formally.
Okay, I know yelling at you in the hall doesn't count. So it's been a year and a couple of months. Okay. What have you been doing?
Jim Duffy, Enterprise Advisory Committee. Well, year in review. So I posted the charter. Then we had these discussion topics, which I also, we also refer to as Ellen's Agenda.
Thank you.
The first item that we completed was the, um, building, uh, water sewer building, uh, construction guidelines that actually got passed by the, uh, select board that is specifically then called for, uh, the ability to use HPDE at, sure, Schedule 80, I think. So something, provide the schedule.
So just one, one second. Were you happy with that, Jim?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
He did all the work.
I know he did. I'm just asking him. I'm, I'm giving him credit here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was roughly May or June of last year that the select board passed it.
Okay.
Cause it, well, it went at 6/21/23, uh, through our, is when we approved it.
Okay.
So I'm assuming it was July or August that it went to the select board. Um, the next one, we have not really tackled yet, and, uh, it's kind of hairy, but I did put it on the list for this year.
Okay.
And specifically, I think that I need, we, the committee, need more education on how this is actually getting calculated. So we're going to invite Mr. Gazinski either to do a meeting with us or come to one of our meetings to actually walk us through the math behind the numbers and the rationale behind that is really where we have to start.
Agreed.
So, um, do we need more capacity? So the answer is yes. The question is when? And, uh, roughly just before the committee got started, there was a one-page spreadsheet that Jim McKay can't find, and I don't, never got the spreadsheet, that talked about number of homes, reserved capacity.
I remember the spreadsheet.
Remember that?
I remember.
Who's got that thing? Where, who created that? Do we know?
I don't think I created it.
I know Craig created one, and we found yours.
I, I was working off of yours, I think, too. I mean, I was just trying to, sometimes I retype.
Do I have any of that stuff?
Somebody created, it was a spreadsheet.
Well, maybe Kathy has it.
And.
It has to be in the email.
And the reason I want it is so I don't have to reinvent.
Yeah.
That whole thing. And the plan will be, that's a living document. The inputs have to come.
Just hold one second. Can you describe it better so we can look for it?
At the time, we had a moratorium on building.
Yes.
Because we were at theoretical capacity.
Yes, because, yes.
And then the spreadsheet sort of showed.
I found it.
Well, on the actual XLS?
I think so.
Or is it my version of it?
Can you come and look and identify it, please?
Uh, I think it looked like that.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Next time, put something out there so we can get it to you quicker.
We used to talk about.
I'm sorry. So it also had a number of homes on there and connections and.
Does it have that?
Hold on.
If you're in your email.
So we wanted to start there.
Forward it to Karen, please.
Yep.
I'll take a copy.
Forward it to Craig, please. Don't forward it to me. I'm kidding.
The reason we wanted to start there is that was a snapshot at roughly the end of 2022, beginning of 2023.
You got to start somewhere.
And a number of those, uh, reserved or approved projects have in fact.
Fallen off.
Come online.
That's right, yeah.
They've not fallen off, they've come in. So we've gained, call it 40 gallons or 50 gallons.
Per door, Jim? Per, per bedroom?
Per bed.
Per bedroom.
So roughly 100-plus gallons per unit, per whatever. We now have that as available capacity, right? And then, so then the question becomes, how many homes, and that's in here somewhere else, is what's our growth capacity? Now, that's probably above my pay grade and certainly above my capability to go do that. But it's an interesting exercise, and again, it'll be a moving target because when you want to build 300 and something units in the MBT 3A zoning, then that skews any sort of model that you had, but it has to be adaptive. Like, the model's got to be living and working, and the inputs from the assessor that says we've got this many sewer bills going out, this many water bills going out, have to get factored into that spreadsheet so that we actually every six months can say, where are we with respect to capacity? And the reason you need to know that is because you then get into sewer versus septic.
That's right.
And onsite.
Right.
As well. And so we did discuss, um, with the Board of Health, they changed their policy to in fact allow homes to have the option of doing sewer.
When did they do that? He's here, John.
6/7/23 is when it went through there. Oh, there he is, he is. Yeah, so they changed one word, shall to may.
Instead of must?
Shall to may.
Oh, shall to may, right, right, right.
Which is all it took. Now, in thinking about that, and I might, I should say, I'm the newly elected chairman of, of this board, so, um, in thinking about that, I think we need to formalize the policy and the plans to sort of encourage septic in certain conditions, single home on a single lot type of situation or a very small subdivision as sewer, uh, septic would be the preferred mechanism.
Or for those people that already have septic, they don't have to when it fails.
Right.
Hook on.
Right. Which triggers a thought, do we in fact have a bylaw that says you have to connect to sewer?
Well, we did.
If you sell your house? No, it's when you sell your house.
No, we talked about, I, I don't think we do. I think we talked about that.
I don't think we ever implemented that bylaw.
Yeah.
It was never.
No, that was the one that kind of blew up.
Okay, cause, cause I think when I moved to town, I was told you got to connect to sewer if you sell your house or something like that. Okay, so we don't have that bylaw.
I don't believe that's anywhere. We did talk about it, making it a thing, but we didn't.
Good, because that supports.
Where you're going.
Yeah, or where we're going.
Did you, in your research, because I researched, I never came up with anything, but did you ever find out what a good mix is?
I don't think there's a good answer.
I don't either.
And it may in fact change as our capacity shrinks as well. I think.
Right.
Our goal is to encourage as much septic as we can for preservation of capacity as well as the science would say, to recharge the aquifers, right?
Yep.
Um, so that's what I believe our approach should be, and that's certainly up to us to communicate that to all the boards so that we get some support of, you know, the goals.
Right. Okay.
And just one point on the growth that you mentioned, the MBTA zoning, that doesn't require us to build it.
I agree.
So if there isn't, if, if there is no sewer capacity, that is a black letter, you can't connect if there's not wa, you can't build if you don't have water and sewer. So that's not going to become a.
Yep.
It could change our prioritization and our scheduling, but it's not going to force us out of compliance.
Well, it gets to the point that we didn't talk about of onsite.
Right.
Treatment. And so.
You mean package plants and things like that?
Yeah, or whatever, or whatever it is. And so the question's going to be, where do you want to put that line?
Do you think it's, forget the MBTA thing. I don't want to consider that. Do you think it's possible to look at the pieces, not the little postage stampy things, but the larger parcels and quantify capacity?
Yeah, I think it is.
I do, too.
It's certainly doable.
You say it's above your pay grade. I think it just take, bless you. I think, I just think it might take a little bit.
Well, it'll take a little bit.
Yeah.
And.
You've got plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, I got at least four years, according to my doctor, so, yeah.
At least, all right. Just setting expectations. Okay.
Um, stormwater, is there a fair way to allocate cost to residents? It would be, yes, get rid of the tax, but we'll go.
I don't remember putting that in. Did I put that in?
Um, I did mark another item on here, and that's rates to usage. Um, and that, I have, I shouldn't say this too loud, the state will be calling me. I have a vacant apartment on my property that I have a $100 water bill for. Um, yeah, we've used a little water, but no one's lived there, so I absolutely would advocate rates to usage.
I have the same thing on a piece of property. I've been paying for like 14 years, so.
Well, most of it's the, the, most of it's the capital tax.
Yes.
Um, so then we have some.
But was advocating for it just the same. So I'm altruistic as hell on this one, all right?
Um, some additional activities and accomplishments. Uh, there were four abatements that came before us last year. Two were approved. I don't know the numbers of what the dollars were. They weren't, two were never finalized for necessary forms and paperwork that they never submitted. We had a Board of Health discussion about requiring foundations to be two feet minimum above the groundwater. That was actually lively discussion with the building inspector and everybody. It, we sort of referred it back because we think their jurisdiction is greater to actually enforce something like that.
Can we go back one second?
Yes.
Did we get to fees yet? My number six.
I probably skipped fees.
Fees?
Yeah.
Did anybody ever review, this would probably be you, Jim. Did anybody ever review the fee structure?
We have not.
Okay.
I stuck the red goal on there. Now, so it's interesting, and, and this did come up at a recent meeting, um, about reviewing them in relation to other towns. When we were going through the make everybody who can connect to sewer, um, debate two years and a half ago, or almost three years ago now, um, I remember on a meeting that the town council said the town should only collect fees that are in line with their costs to do whatever. And I was thinking at the time, well, $4,600 for some paperwork, and how many hours of that is somebody actually going out and inspecting? And I have no idea what the real breakdown is, but I don't think it's 400 hours at, or, or 40 hours at a hundred bucks an hour to.
I don't remember the town council saying that, but I can check.
So I, well, I, just to add in, so, so fees, when you're charging municipal fees, the fees have to be commensurate with the work that's being performed. You can't just arbitrarily say, I'm going to charge $7,500 for a yard sale permit fee. You're not allowed to do that. So that's, I think that's what you're speaking to. So you have to have some, there has to be some proof in the pudding behind the fees.
Right.
That's all.
Well, we know that.
So we can treat that. Yeah, exactly. So you got to figure out.
And you break it up, and it works.
And you figure out how it works.
Right.
Am I speaking correctly? We have the town council here. Am I speaking correctly?
That's the gist.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
He was the town council at the time, but.
He just approved a rate increase, but across the board, right? So the fees, right, for this would be raising by 5%. For sewer.
Right.
Right.
But we're talking about like connection.
Connections, yeah.
Those kinds of fees.
But they're also, yeah, those are all going up 5%.
Yeah.
Everything.
Will they go up the same? Okay.
Yeah, so really, it's just a question of breaking down why the fee is what it is and see if that's reasonable.
Well, the, the question is, can we raise them? That's what's come up. Or should they get raised compared to maybe what some other towns are? Which then it gets back to, well, okay, is it fair based on, you know, some opinion as to what should justify those fees?
I think you.
And we also take a larger multi-unit development, we're charging that connection fee per door.
Yes, correct.
So is there rationale for size of development and fees where perhaps a single-family home you could in fact collect more money for versus a multifamily home where you're getting, you know, $100,000 for sewer connections and whatever, so.
Okay.
So, um, we good on fees for now?
Yes, we can get off fees for now.
Um, so some other things we did, the abatements we talked about, Board of Health discussion on groundwater. We did a wonderful walkthrough of the PFAS treatment plant. Um, we encourage everyone to go see it, actually. We did a vid, the video was on PFAS, right? The whole DPW? Yep, you see Joe Cool McKay there on, on the video? Um, we reviewed the stormwater management plan. There is in, uh, review and approve latest stormwater design guidelines. So the last we knew that was at town council for review of, because there's some bylaw changes and things like that.
So that was presented before Mike Feller was here, and we, I have, we, we will, Mike and I have to review it before we send it off to town council.
Okay.
Yeah. And it would be appropriate for a little bit of a town meeting, depending on how costly, you know, the meeting could be, so.
Okay.
If there's any, Jim may say that this is just a straight vote from the board.
Okay.
Yep. Um, various reviews and perulogy of DPW budgets and purchases, i.e. the Vector truck, which is, we've almost paid for that, right? Haven't, haven't got enough use out of that, so. It's been very handy to have, apparently. Uh, and then we had virtually no votes for sewer connections other than 1098 Main. There was one other one that got, got bypassed for us, so this may be a busier year.
Okay.
Uh, for us. Uh, and so that's it.
That's it? All right, so you have some things for, you're looking toward.
Sure.
With the red stars and the.
Yeah. Yep.
Pretty stars. All right, good, we'll see you soon.
It's because I couldn't figure out how to do a checkmark and.
John, can I ask you a question while you're here? Can you come up for, come up for a second, please? This is all part of it.
Can I apologize, everyone? I was told the AC was actually working again and.
Been lied to again.
It has not come on, has it? It's still pretty roasty in here.
John, I just have a question. So you, 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 you made a new regulation.
Correct.
To get rid of the must hook on.
Correct.
Okay.
To, uh, to may. We just changed one word.
Okay, to May. You didn't, did you do, okay. Did you put in any language to mirror Title V? We talked about that.
In regards to the connection to town sewer?
Yeah. You, because your, your language was just so nothing.
I have to go back.
All right, go back and look.
In the meeting minutes and find out exactly what the rationale was.
Right. And then we wanted to put in some kind of a variance option, didn't we? Because maybe people need one?
Well, I think that the board reserved the right to determine if it was an environmentally sensitive area that they would have to hook the sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that language in there?
I'm pretty sure it is. In fact, let me see if I can find it here. Oh, it was in subject abandonment, two years of files.
You put it somewhere.
Yeah, I know that it was discussed.
Okay.
I can't see it exactly in the language here, but I definitely know it was discussed.
That was discussed. I'd like to make sure it's in the language.
You don't have to look now. We can talk later.
We've got a lawnmower to buy.
We have a lawnmower to buy.
Yeah, it was one of the criteria that we had put in place.
I know, but I don't know if, I haven't seen this regulations. I don't know if it's, if it made it.
Yeah, all I know is it was discussed.
All right, check it out.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks. Are we good?
I think we're set.
Okay.
Is the information from the advisory going to be posted online? Yes, tonight. Thank you.
They're, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next topic for discussion. Where are we here? Okay.
Lawnmower.
No.
Jim McKay is.
Approval of the.
Purchase of a DPW lawnmower.
Jim, you ready? Okay, take your time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are two emergency purchases that we're asking for the lawnmower. One of our zero-turn mowers, one on fire two weeks ago. We tried to replace the motor, and it's just got too expensive. It's a 14-year-old mower that we're replacing.
Got your money out of it.
So we did get three bids, and this is staying in line with the Bobcat equipment that we've been purchasing with most of the other equipment. It's under the state bid list, so I would ask that you allow the town administrator to sign a contract with Bobcat of Boston in the amount of $13,100.
Okay, you have a motion?
I move to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a contract with Bobcat of Boston for a zero-turn riding mower for a not-to-exceed amount of $13,100.
Before you second it. Do you have the money?
Yes, it's coming out of the budget.
Okay.
Yes, it would be a four-way split.
Second.
It's been moved.
Talk after a second, too.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, number, next one?
The next one is a service contract. Our well number six, we've been testing well six. We want to put it back online. We usually run well five or well six, not together jointly. But because of the PFAS levels, we've taken well three offline. We exceeded the 20 pots per trillion back in, I'd say, June, and it's been offline. I mean, it's going to come offline for the reconstruction. Actually, let me update you on that. The town administrator, the letter we received, he'll be getting it any day now that we did finally get the SRF grant approved from the Mass DEP. That's a big deal, because now we can actually put the thing out to bid. And then once that's out to bid, then we can go to the federal, the EPA, and secure that funding for the 3.5 million dollars that we can start expending.
This isn't the news you were going to tell us.
This is, this is, this is.
Better good, different good news.
This is good news. This is really good news.
Okay.
So this is bad news. So well six here is offline. No, that other pot, no, I can't talk about that because it's legal.
But this is the good news we knew about earlier that we're just waiting for timing on.
And it finally, it finally, we finally got the approval on the SRF Friday.
What's the bad news?
So well six, we've been testing it, and every time we try to put it back on, it comes back positive for coliform. And we've been flushed it, and we're flushing it, and it's in the raw water, so it's not, it doesn't contaminate the treated water. So we flushed it, and we can't, there's either, honestly, there's got to be a dead animal or something stuck in the pipe that we just can't get out of there. So we have to hire a contractor to come in.
You have to hire a dead animal.
And to be clear, this is not connected to our drinking water at this moment.
It's not at all.
Can't say that enough, Jim.
Can't, it's not, not in our system.
Much information. Dead animals and lawnmowers on fire.
Once you said dead animals, we have to stress that this is not in our drinking water.
It's not in our drinking.
You pay extra for the dead animal.
Yes, yes.
Labor.
So it asks that the, and again, we got three bids for this, and the lowest bid came into FG Sullivan. FG Sullivan's done much work for us, and he is the lowest bidder at $14,100.
Jeez, Craig, couldn't you reach in there for less than $14,000 and pull that dead animal out? Honestly.
Not doing that. Get one of my kids to crawl in.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a contract with FG Sullivan for emergency cleaning and redevelopment of well number six for a not-to-exceed amount of $14,100.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And that will be coming out of strictly out of the water budget, and those funds are there for this exact purpose.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. The dead animal fund.
Yes.
How big's the pipe, and how dry is it?
Yeah, yeah, I know, right? We'll have to take a look at that, Jim. We may be able to beat that bid. We ready for the next item?
Yeah.
We are.
Okay, the next item is.
So this is the state primary election warrant for 2024. I don't know if you're aware that we have a big election coming up this year.
Really?
I don't know if you've heard about that.
Heard there's a series of them.
I've been away.
So this is for the state primary warrant.
Okay.
So we're looking for you to approve and sign the state primary election warrant.
Okay.
Which will be, by the way, on Tuesday, the third day of September.
Yes. I move to approve and sign the warrant for the 2024 state primary as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, the next item we're going to talk about for a minute. We, we need to set the time and date for the fall annual town meeting. So, oh, are we just, we're just going to do the motion? We're going to talk about it?
We can talk about it.
It is up to, I don't, Mike, are you?
I think some explanation is needed.
I don't know if Mike is there.
I think Mike's there. We wanted to.
I don't know if you want to speak to the town meeting piece.
Mike, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, just briefly. I know we were looking at the possibility of a Saturday. We're trying to coordinate a day that would.
So let me, hold on, just, Mike, hold on one second. I don't know if people are aware, but it's been requested over the years to consider having a Saturday town meeting. And we have two town meetings, and I don't know why we couldn't pick one to be a Saturday, because people say that there are a lot of people in town that don't drive at night, and our town meetings go well into the dark, especially in November, and why can't we consider it? So we are considering it, and we considered it for this next town meeting. Okay, go, Mike.
Okay, so, yeah, so we were looking at a date that worked for the town moderator, town council, and was, we could work, we could have the availability of the auditorium. The dates that we've come down to at this point is, are for the night, Saturday the night, Saturday the 16th, and Tuesday, the 19th of November. But it, but we were, I think we were concerned about the ninth because that was part of a three-day weekend, because of Veterans Day, and it appears now the 16th may not work for town council. So it looks like we're looking at the 19th at this point, which is a Tuesday, so that would not be a Saturday. But that's the only date I think that's available at this point that everyone could attend.
Yep, I agreed. I don't want people to think that we're not going to consider a Saturday town meeting because we very well may consider one for May. But the ninth would just be impossible since it's part of a three-day weekend, and I'm going away that weekend, and I'm sure many of you are. So we have before us.
I think it's important that we, that we point out also that it was supposed to be November 4th, but we moved that because of the presidential election that's on the 5th.
Which is the next day, right.
And our town poll workers didn't want to stay up until midnight and then get up the next morning at whatever time they have to get there and start working the polls on the biggest turnout day that occurs every four years. So, so we moved it. Originally, we were going to move it from the 4th to later in the week, but that didn't work for anybody.
Right.
Saturdays didn't work out, as we heard, and that puts us where we are now.
And then the next, and then the next Monday after the 4th is Veterans Day.
Yeah.
So it couldn't be that. And then the next Monday is the 18th, which didn't work for town council, so that's why we would bump it to the next day, the 19th.
Right.
So. And Madam Chair, I had, I had mentioned to Mike that maybe we wanted to start at 7:00 instead of 7:30 to make it a little more palatable to people. But, Mike, you had said we may have to have a special town meeting prior to the actual fall annual town meeting due to the.
The, yeah.
Override, correct?
Yes, just for the purpose of the override question, due to the fact, the way the state law is written in regards to town meetings and overrides, town council had a concern about doing it fall annual, and was much more comfortable having it a, a special town meeting in November, which the only concern there is that the, there'd be a quorum requirement of approximately 280 voters for that one article. But I think the thought process being is if, if it does get approved at the ballot, that question on November 5th, it should, should not be a problem, hopefully, to get that many voters to that meeting on the 19th.
Well, wait a minute.
So the idea is that the special town meeting would occur like the half hour before the actual town meeting?
So, right, so maybe that would be at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
And the fall annual would start at 7:30.
Oh, the same night?
May I ask?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a quick question about that, too? Do we have to declare a start time for certain? Not that we do start for certain at our town meetings. It drags past 7:30. So in other words, if we run the special at 7:00, discussion's running, and we don't get to the regular until 8:00, is that a problem if we post the, the regular for 7:30?
It's not a big problem. I've, I've dealt with this in other towns before, and, you know, some towns, the moderator wants to, if the 7 o'clock meeting has 7:30, they'll recess the 7 o'clock meeting to open the 7:30 meeting, and then they'll recess the 7:30 meeting to go back to the 7 o'clock special meeting.
Right.
So it can be handled.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we don't run into a cutting off discussion or.
No.
Having issues. Good, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to do that. There are ways around that.
And one of my concerns was if everybody's coming in and they're checking in, do they have to then go out and get checked in again for the second town meeting? And no, that is not the case, we don't think.
No, they do not.
Okay.
Because that would be awful. So.
All right.
Any further discussion on the 19th being the date?
No, I'm putting it in the calendar.
No, I guess we stay at 7:30 and.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
I move that the time and date of the fall annual town meeting be set as Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 7:30 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, hold on, turning the page.
Ellen, you wanted to talk about the.
I do.
Repairs.
I wanted to talk about the, the train station. Another year has passed. We're getting into another winter, and we still have no money. We've been waiting for this money to, to come for, well, since I got on the board. So, Mike, you're still there. The money's not coming, correct?
That's correct. I, I did contact the state, and they, it is, it is basically, the bond is set aside, but every year, it's the governor's decision as to which of the projects in the list get approved, and we have not been approved the last two years, and there's no guarantee we'll get approved next year. So we really have to go ahead with the assumption that we, we will not be getting that, those funds. If we get some of those funds, that'd be helpful and a bonus, but we cannot depend on it.
Okay.
Having said that, I would, I would think that in order to protect the building, we would want to look at, you know, an article at the fall town meeting using free cash and maybe requesting funds from the Community Preservation Commission to get the necessary funds to at least tighten up the building and get it weather sealed so that there's no deterioration to the building as we seek funds for the next phase.
Okay, so I've been talking about two things for two and a half years. I've been talking about a new roof and new siding. We have a bit on the roof. It hasn't been updated. It was somewhere around 55 grand, and the siding, I'm still waiting on, but I can't imagine it's any more than 100 or a buck and a quarter or a buck fifty. I don't think the whole thing is any more than $200,000 to protect the building. I know people think that the building is a disaster. It is not a disaster by any stretch of the imagination. It has good bones. The interior is fine. The heating system is fine. It doesn't have air conditioning, but a couple of splits would, would do that. Again, the roof and the siding. So I would like to put something on the fall town meeting as soon as we get a bid for the siding to button it up. Again, I don't think it's any more than $200,000. We need to do something.
When you say siding, is that?
The entire envelope.
Okay.
And including.
Apron?
Yeah, including the overhang, right? There's a giant, I don't know what you want to call it. The, I call it a soffit, but people typically don't know what that is. It's the piece that goes around the whole thing, and all the siding, all the way up. So the whole envelope, every exterior piece that you see. That's what I think.
200 would be nice, if that's a reasonable number.
I, I think we can bring it, I do. I just, it's a small building. I mean, I know we all think it's, it's bigger than it is. It gets bigger every day, but it isn't. Go ahead, Diane.
I'd like to suggest pointing, repointing the stones.
Take your time.
Diane Germain, 21 Causeway Street.
Can you bring that down?
Yep.
I, the, the repointing and pointing, it's not, that piece of it is not damaging anything. There are, there is some pieces that need to be, be repointed, and I don't know, for people that don't know what that is, is there's a lot of stone around the building, and there's some cracking in between, and you get a mason to come and literally re-cement the seams. The whole building doesn't need to be done. I can get a, I can get a quote on that. I don't believe that that is seeping inside. That's all. It's more, I, I know it doesn't look good, but it's more aesthetic than structural.
Because of the grade, some of it is getting in the basement.
Okay.
And that, that basement wall, we had suggested putting a separate wall in, not bothering to repoint those stones, because it's not going to hold, I don't think.
Okay.
But there are some areas in the exterior where the stones are, where the animals have been getting in. So that ought to be looked at as well, because it doesn't make sense to do everything else and not do that.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Pete Germain, 21 Causeway. Even on the select board, I supported the concept of rehabilitating the station. However, my concern is one that's been raised regularly, which is, what are we going to use it for? Do we have anyone interested in using that facility? If we're going to spend 200,000, and I know money has always been tight in the town, we can all look at it and say, well, would that money be better spent elsewhere? And if we're spending it on the train station, do we have any idea what it could be used for? Who might use it? Is there any chance to lease it? Are there any other options?
I, I would anticipate that this would go through the capital planning committee, just like every other major project, so that's when that discussion would be had, I'm sure.
I mean, Pete, if I win the lottery, I'm opening a yarn shop.
A yarn shop, right there.
Well. It would be perfect.
We already have one potential tenant.
So I have to play to win. So as soon as that happens.
You're second to me, because I want to see an ice cream parlor. That's beside the point.
Pete, I'm, I'm not speaking as a select board member here, but as a landlord, I don't Pete, I'm, I'm not speaking as a select board member here, but as a landlord, I don't see any reason why that place would not be leasable if we make it leasable. I just don't.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
I'm just bringing up the argument that's been advanced virtually every time we get close to looking to fund it. And it's not that I don't want to see it funded. I think we need to be able to advance the discussion and argument in a positive manner to say, here's why we're spending X amount, 200,000, whatever it is, of town funds on this versus, and I could come up with half a dozen other things that people will come up with as potential objections. That's all I'm trying to deal with.
No, I get it. I get it, but, so you have to look, first of all, it's the most beautiful building in Milis, I think. I think a lot of people agree with me. It's historic. There are very few of these left. Even if it, we were to go out there and just look at it, it's worth a couple of hundred thousand preserving this building over any other pet project you may have. That's my opinion. I know it's a lot of other people's opinions. I just, this.
I, I have one comment on the building, which is, I love the building. I think it's a beautiful building as well. One of our issues over there is no one maintains the landscaping outside of the building either. And I, this is a very tough situation. We are already short-staffed for the DPW and everywhere else. We own all of these buildings. We are not maintaining the outside of these buildings, and I think that's something that really needs to get looked at. I know it's a little outside the scope here, but the thought is if you get someone in there to rent, maybe part of the rental agreement is they have to maintain the exterior of the building and the landscaping as well, just as part of it. Because I feel like we're, we're doing a disservice. We replace the building, but you can't see it because of the long grass. It seems crazy, and that's not a, cut to the DPW at all. They work very hard. I just, I don't know what the answer is there. We've got to also look at that.
Well, the answer is, it's just what you said. You can make it part of the deal. I mean, anything can be part of the deal. We don't even, you know, how much the town wants to make off the building, as long as somebody maintains the building. Now, if you win the lottery and get it, would you go out there and mow?
Sure.
Absolutely. Okay.
Excellent. Hired.
That's what I got.
Our sample size of one indicates it's an absolute deal.
All right. We have an approval of amendment?
So before you move on, so we're going to put something on the.
Yes.
We're going to put it before the capital planning, and then we'll bring it from there, like they report everything else now.
Right, yeah, right, right.
And then we can decide off their list what we include based on high, medium, low priority and how much money we have.
Right, okay.
Okay, good. All right, next, we have approval of amendment to an alcohol license, which is.
This is pretty straightforward. So the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, otherwise known as the ABCC, requires that if you change a manager for the license, that the local licensing authority has to approve that, and you three are the local licensing authority. So what they're looking to do is go from the existing manager to Steven Schioli, would like to be, Schioli, Schioli?
Schioli.
Schioli. Is looking to be the manager. He filled out all the proper paperwork for the ABCC, and I have confirmed that he is up to date with his tax payments and whatnot, so he's in good standing if the board would like to approve this amendment.
So I don't know if I should recuse myself here because I have.
Oh, right, because you are, you are the landlord.
I'm the landlord over there, so I guess I'll.
I guess you accuse yourself of being careful, but yes.
Great.
All right, so I'll.
I'll back up.
I'll make the motion and take the vote, okay? All right, I move to approve, no, hold on. I move to approve and sign the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Licensing Authority cer- certification for change of manager for SNS Enterprises LLC, DBA Avalinas, naming Steven Schioli as manager.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, great. Now we have approval of request for flags from the SAFE Coalition.
I think this is me again, so I don't know if you can see, that the SAFE Coalition puts the purple flag. So we had the pride flags on the lawn. The purple flags are through the SAFE Coalition, and they are for opioid, opioid overdose awareness, I guess. And so each flag represents somebody who was lost to overdose. They do have about a little over 1,000 flags that they place out, and they were looking to place them on the town hall lawn to raise awareness, basically over Memorial Day weekend. Labor Day weekend, that's the one. So it would be from, right, August 28th to Monday, September 2nd.
Motion?
I move to approve the request by SAFE Coalition to place approximately 1,000 purple flags on the front lawn at the Veterans Memorial Building from Wednesday, August 28th through Monday, September 2nd, 2024, in memory of those lost to opioid use as part of International Overdose Awareness Day.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Next, approval of a one-day special alcohol licenses for a clambake on 8/18/24.
Boy, I want to go to that. Correct, so there are, right, there are two.
And the other one's for Bogastock, which is a terrific event, on 9/21/24.
Right, so both, you have to, when you approve them, they are approved for Nate Maltsinsky, being the person who is applying actually for the one-day special alcohol license. You give it to a person, not a entity?
This is for Bogastow Fishing Game.
Correct, and it's for the Bogastow Fishing Game Club, the two events that they're having. As you said, one is the clambake on August 18th from 12 to 5:00. The other one is Bogastock Music Festival, Melissa's Own Woodstock, from 12 to 9:00 PM. They are both, they're nonprofit. They are both for all alcohol.
Okay.
How do you get to go to these? Do they open to the public?
Yes.
Buy a ticket.
Yeah, you buy a ticket to go.
You don't even have to, just go. Buy a ticket there, at the door.
Okay. All right, I move to approve a one-day.
I'll call you, we'll go.
Okay.
I'll post it.
I know you won't call me.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a one-day special all-alcohol license for Nathan Maltsinsky for August 18th, 2024, from 12 to 5:00 PM for the annual clambake at Bogastow Fishing Game Club located at 247 Ridge Street.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I move to approve a one-day special all-alcohol license for Nathan Maltsinsky for September 21st, 2024, from 12 to 9:00 PM for the annual Bogastock Music Festival at Bogastow Fish and Game Club located at 247 Ridge Street.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Congratulations, Nate.
Excellent.
Okay, next, the ratification of a finance director contract and a police union MOU. Karen, you're up.
So the first one is the employment agreement between the town of Milis and Jody Kersey, who is our new finance director, who will be starting on September 3rd, I believe. The board has already approved and signed this in executive session, so you are simply ratifying this contract here in open session.
I move to ratify the employment agreement between the town of Milis and Jody Kersey effective September 3rd, 2024, through September 2nd, 2027, as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And we are going to defer the police union MOU to the next meeting. It is not ready.
Okay, that's easy. Next, we have liaison updates, my favorite part of the night. Craig?
I attended an economic development meeting, and we discussed a wonderful guide on how to navigate the process. We actually discussed a few items that were outstanding, nothing critical. There's nothing major that was happening at that point. Then we, I, I shared the document you sent me.
You did?
Yeah, and we're going to be discussing that in depth at our next meeting.
Awesome.
So I think we have a direction for the next few months.
Okay, great.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Excellent.
Can't even make anything up.
Not in the last place.
She toured the White House.
I toured the White House last week.
You toured the White House?
Yes.
How was that?
Thank you to Congressman Ock and Claus.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
I need to capitalize on that. I never thought of that.
You think? Well, I, of course, I'm going to beat both of you, which I do nearly every week. So I went to the Milis Energy Committee, very exciting. They put their RFP out for that net zero plan. Remember we talked about? They're really, I have to say, they, they're doing, they're doing good stuff. Anyway, they put it out. I have no idea, he was on, but I didn't, we didn't, I didn't think to ask him if they got any, any bites. So we'll see where that is.
But there are a few.
Yeah. Did they get some?
Yes.
Awesome. And then, oh, and this is, yeah, okay, never mind. They have a grant for this, I think.
Yes.
To pay for this. And then I went to the Charles River Pollution Control Meeting, you know, my favorite. And that was fun, and we didn't even have any sewer connections, Franklin, Medway, Medway. So we're still at like one connection since we.
Are those monthly meetings?
I'm glad we spent that time developing that policy for one connection.
They're monthly, yeah, one month long. On the Wednesdays, yeah. And then a couple of other things I did that I'm just going to count as work.
I can do that.
Okay. I met with Bob Weiss, with Dan, to make sure that he was on, online, and he is, with updating that, the state's numbers that they have for us for 40Bs, right? Because we're getting close to 10%.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Bless you. So when we get to 10%, we get to say, no, we're not going to do a 40B for you. So he's, he's updating that site, which is terrific.
Good.
And then while I had him in my office, I had our solar company, who Select.
Yes.
Who does Milis, talk about the charging stations we have at Clyde Brown that have never been turned on.
Right.
Right, which is upsetting.
I've seen a couple there.
It is upsetting. I don't know that.
They're, they're, they've never been on, ever.
Really?
Never.
I saw someone plugged in once.
Yeah, really?
I did.
Well, they're going to be in for a root surprise.
They go to driveway and they're going to push the car.
They've never been turned on because to my understanding, and I, I hate saying this right out there, but I told you I'd, I'd be right out there, nobody wanted to take ownership of it. The town didn't want to, and the school didn't want to, so they were never turned on, no contract was ever paid, and now the software's defunct, the company's gone.
Oh, come on.
You can't make this up.